Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, July 7th, 2020 Miami Shores Village Council meeting. And before I do, I'd like to just read some words as it relates to having our virtual meeting. So bear with me. Good evening. Pursuant to the extended executive order number 20-69 issued by Governor DeSantis, municipalities may conduct meetings of their governing board without having a forum of its members present physically or at any specific location and utilizing communications media technologies such as telephonic or video conferencing as provided by Section 120.54, Rens 5 sub B sub 2 of the Florida statutes. The meeting will be opened with a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Assistant Village Attorney McIntosh.
Present.
Village Manager Benton.
Here.
Councilman Brady.
Here.
Councilman Melz.
Here.
Councilman LaFredo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Birch.
Present.
Mayor Wagler.
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you. For this July 7, 2020 virtual council meeting, the Miami Shores Village Council is convened by Zoom as posted on the village's public notice site, which also identifies how the public may view, listen, and participate in the meeting. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. The agenda and all supporting documentation are available on the village website. In order to ensure the public has the ability to view and listen to the meeting, the village is broadcasting the meeting through all the usual communication channels that are provided when a village council meeting is held fully in council chambers at Village Hall. This includes live streaming via the village website, Facebook, Instagram, Nextdoor, Public Stuff, YouTube, and Twitter. Additionally, the meeting is also available on Comcast Channel 77 and YouTube the day after the council meeting. You may also listen to the live meeting by calling the dedicated Zoom phone line as indicated on the public notice. To provide a reasonable opportunity for public comments, the village has encouraged the public to submit written comments prior to the start of the meeting using the village's new e-comment function. The village clerk will reread, will read ecomments into the record. Please note, as the presiding officer, I may exercise authority to limit the length of time of public comments in the interest of time and to preserve our decorum and our order. Please note, public comments is not a Q&amp;A forum. Therefore, if you have any questions, please contact individual council members and/or staff prior to or after the meeting. However, all comments will be included as part of the official record for this virtual meeting and will be considered by the village council prior to any action taken. All interested parties are required to abide by all state, county, and local emergency orders and are urged to practice social distancing. If the proposition is being continued or rescheduled, the opportunity to be heard may be at such later date before the village council takes action on such proposition. Thank you. With that, Madam Clerk, shall we start with ecomments?
First comment is from Leah Grossman. I've recently been made aware that the FAA plans to change the flight path of all planes departing MIA to the east. It seems clear this change would negatively impact Miami Shores. There will be noise disruption very early in the morning and negative effects to our air quality, property values, and overall quality of life in our beautiful and peaceful neighborhood. I feel we should band together as a community to oppose this change. The deadline for comment is July 10th. Please consider ways to disseminate this information to residents and encourage as many people as possible to comment in opposition. Can the council submit a formal statement to the FAA? I'm forwarding the information that was sent to me below. Thank you. The FAA has plans to change the flight path of all flights that take off into the east, which is basically every flight at MIA, to start making returns over the Upper East Side, Miami Shores, Upper Tahu, Little Haiti, Bayside, Morningside, and surrounding areas. Instead of out over the water where they turn now, it's not only more dangerous, but it'll be loud and includes louder cargo planes that will fly very early in the morning. Please add your comments to the FAA departure taking off to the east by July 10th if this bothers you. They have given us no notice by mail or email comment, so it's up to us to tell our friends and neighbors ASAP. If you need to add your comments, what I submitted, please use it as you see fit. I have received no notice of this proposed change for the east takeoff flight path at MIA. As strongly contested as our historic neighborhoods of single-family homes will be negatively impacted. Many communities surrounding my 33138 zip code successfully opposed a similar change years ago. The noise and fuel exhaust pollution are considerable. Moreover, it is dangerous and impactful for our community. As I understand it, this includes louder cargo planes that fly very early in the morning and all northwestbound flights. This will be negative on many levels for our property values, our air quality, and especially our quiet enjoyment of our beautiful historic neighborhoods if adopted. Please do not move forward with the change. Next speaker is Lou Perez, 145 Northeast 103rd Street. Madam Mayor, Council, and staff, as you may be aware, the FAA is preparing an environmental assessment in accordance with FAA Order 1050.1F to document the potential environmental effects associated with the proposed optimization of aircraft routes and the supporting airspace management structure serving aircraft operating under instrument flight rules while departing from or arriving to the south-central Florida Metroplex area. Section 4.3.7 of the FAA project, noise and compatible land use, this section begins to explain a most complex set of noise level analysis, which in the end will no doubt have a negative impact on our community. We are already impacted by the current FAA flight path rules of noisy daytime passenger flights and even more disruptive nighttime cargo flights. I have submitted to the FAA my objection to any changes that will increase aircraft traffic over our community. Will village government be submitting its own objection on our behalf as well? Thank you. Next comment is from Victor Bruce. Good evening, Mayor Wagler and council members. My name is Victor Bruce and I reside at 370 Northeast 101st Street. I'd like to express my gratitude to all of you for allowing the planning and zoning hearing of June to proceed at the Rec Center. The CDC's guidelines were followed, making it a successful meeting with all projects approved. As you might know, I am a local architect and these hearings are very important for my business as well as for other trade professionals and building contractors that I work with. They also contribute monetarily to the village. I'm using this e-comment to encourage that the same be done for the upcoming and scheduled July hearing. If the guidelines are implemented once more, like the wearing of masks and distancing of about 10 feet between seated attendees, I cannot see how it is not possible to have another successful hearing and take the scheduled break in August. Thank you for your time and service, and I look forward to a live planning and zoning board hearing at the Recreation Center. Sincerely, and stay safe. Next comment is from Peter Walsh. In the new thriller movie, The Invisible Man, a woman is being stalked by a mad genius who has found a way to make himself invisible. Because he is invisible, the man is able to sneak into the victim's home without her knowing. Then, once inside, he assaults her. But then, one day, the woman wakes up or comes up with an idea. She throws paint into the air to see whether it sticks to the invisible attacker. It does, and so she has turned him from invisible to visible. And now that she can see him, she can fight him and defeat him. COVID is our invisible man. He is everywhere, but we can't see him. And because we can't see him, we are bumping into him everywhere we go, but don't even know it. And in many cases, he's already invaded our homes, but we don't have a clue. But we do have a weapon, an easy and inexpensive weapon, to turn this invisible man invisible so that we can defeat him. That weapon is testing. Miami Shores needs immediately to deploy a COVID testing program for all of our residents. This will not be expensive at all, but regardless of its cost, it is cheaper than the alternative of doing nothing. As that alternative would lead to needless sickness, suffering, and even death right here in Miami Shores, no joke. Anyone who has tried to get tested recently is well aware that it is extremely difficult and nearly impossible to get tested right now in Dade or Broward counties. And if you're a teen, you might as well forget about it. Even though teens are the big virus spreaders right now, that's because teens and even younger kids feel completely healthy and just don't think they have it, don't think they're going to get it. But if they got tested and became aware that they were carrying COVID, they would do the right thing and stay home until they got rid of it. But right now, they just don't know they have it, and so they're spreading it everywhere. So our village and government needs to take the bull by the horns and establish a testing program right now. We need to make testing so easy and so convenient that everyone will go out and get tested right away. And we need to encourage people to get retested as often as they want, at least once a week, especially teens and kids, because teens and younger kids find it extremely difficult to stay isolated from their friends, as young people get endorsements from socializing with other young people. We should establish three or four testing stations, one at the field, one or two around Doctor's Charter School and that huge parking lot, and a Ford somewhere else. We should leave them open for 16 hours a day so that there is little or no wait to get tested. The testing must be quick and convenient so that everyone can do it and do it frequently. We need to get the test results distributed immediately, and when someone tests positive, we need to notify other people whom they've been in contact with that someone they've been in contact with has tested positive. A positive test must not be as a stigma. If a household with more than one Corona case needs help with shopping, et cetera, we need to deploy teen volunteers to do their shopping for them. If we follow these easy steps, we can eradicate Corona in our community and serve as a model for other communities. Miami Shores high schoolers can be quickly trained to perform this easy task, and they can earn money or earn community service credits for that work, or we can train village employees such as code enforcement officers. If we were really smart, we'd pay people, especially teens, $25 every time they get tested. Those payments would save our community tremendous amounts of money in the coming months, as despises gets worse, but frankly, I don't think we're smart enough to do all of that. Madam Mayor, this concludes the comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you. We move on to minutes.
Approval of the June 16, 2020 Village Council meeting minutes.
Would I move that we approve the minutes?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Birch. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The pose. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Would it be with you and the council, excuse me, if we switch the order a little bit of the agenda, our auditors, I understand, have got another meeting tonight, so could we put 8A next so that we can hear from our auditing team and they can move on to their next meeting?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Go ahead, go right ahead. We're moving on to item 8A.
Okay. Councilors, you all know, every year we have our finances audited by an independent auditing firm. They are, excuse me, I know I mispronounce this every year, but it's Cavalero, Fearman, Lorena, and Garcia. And we have Enrique Lorena here, who is our lead auditor for our account, and he's on Zoom here with us tonight, who will take us through his findings and our audit presentation.
Good evening, and thank you very much. Again, for the record, my name is Enrique Lorena, and I served as the engagement partner on the audit on the village's financial statements for the fiscal year end of September 30th, 2019. Mr. Benton, I'm working on, with my fellow partners, the name of the firm, to just see FLG, to mitigate the pronunciation issue. So I'll jump right in. If you, I'm assuming everyone has received their packet. If you could turn to page 1, you'd see our independent audit report. And on this report, the first section is titled "Report on Financial Statements." It describes the items that we audited, and it states that we've audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information of Miami Shores, Florida, the village as of the fiscal year end of September 30th, 2019. This paragraph is followed by "Management's Responsibility," which is that management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. The next three paragraphs are labeled "Auditor's Responsibility," and in essence, our responsibility is to express opinions on these financial statements based on our audit. Close to the bottom of this report, you see the opinion section. Here you see an example of an unmodified opinion, and it is the only kind of opinion that you would want to be associated with, and states that, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the village as of September 30th, 2019. Pages 3 through 12 have management's discussion and analysis. And if there's one section of the financials that you read, it should be this. This is plain English explanation discussing what transpired during the year, and the management compares it to property, and not only tells you what changed, but why. So it's a very good section to examine on your own and go through, and it gives you a very good snapshot of what occurred throughout the year. Because of the date of the financial statements, I'm sure you've received much more current information. I'm not going to dive into numbers. I'm going to continue on to discuss our report. Our remaining reports within this document are on page 105 of the CAFRA. And here you see what's commonly referred to as the Yellow Book Report. It's independent audit report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government audit standards. And in essence, when you look at this report, you break it down into two sections. There's the internal control over financial reporting, and then you have a compliance and other matters section. And here, we will report to you that rose to the level of a significant deficiency or material weakness that resulted as, or that came up during the course of our audit. And I'm pleased to know that we do not have any findings to report to you at this time. Page 107, here you see the management letter required by Section 10.550 of the Rules of the Audit General, and it's a required letter that we need to include. And I just, if you can go to the second page of that letter, which is page 108. In the financial condition and management section, there's a section here where we will communicate to you any recommendation to improve financial management, and we're pleased to know that we did not identify anything to bring to your attention. And in essence, what we would disclose in this letter is anything that doesn't rise to the level of a significant deficiency or material weakness, but it's still something that we would like to highlight to those charged with governance. I'm pleased to know that there's nothing to report. We also have an opportunity on this letter in the next section labeled "Additional Matters" to communicate to you if we saw any immaterial instances of noncompliance with provisions of contracts and grant agreements, or if there was any abuse that occurred or was likely to occur, and we're pleased to know that there was nothing to bring to your attention related to that either. The next cover is the communication to those charged with governance, which is a letter that we provide a conclusion. And this letter summarizes some of the significant estimates in the financial statements or sensitive disclosures, but the biggest piece is if we get to report to you management's performance. We get to tell you if we had any disagreements with management, or if we had any difficulties in dealing with management. And I'd actually like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Benton, Holly, and the rest of them for all of their support throughout the process. Their assistance is incredibly important, and we appreciate all the support that they provided. This concludes my presentation. I'm available times for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Enrique. Do we have any questions?
Anyone? Madam Mayor?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yes. So, Mr. Lorena, I know that you audit a lot of cities, and that so many cities have so much consternation about the future. And I'm wondering if your firm has some recommendations for the village as we go forward from the financial position we're in now to some difficulties that we might be headed toward?
I can tell you that management takes a very conservative approach to managing your budget and planning for the future. Obviously, these are uncertain times with COVID-19, and we still don't know the effect that this is going to have on municipalities. Everybody's planning for their budget on potential estimates that are coming, and you are receiving some, but we still don't know the extent of this current area that we're in and what they're talking about potentially in the fall and the implications that that could have. As practices are developed with that, and we see things that people or other municipalities are implementing, we would definitely recommend that to you, but I don't have anything at this time that I can tell you that you need to do to change. We've always had very active conversations with Holly throughout this process, and I know she's very cognizant of the financial position of the village and is always looking to see how to, how to ensure that you're covered in the event of an unexpected emergency such as hurricanes and now dealing with COVID-19.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great question. Any other questions?
Comment.
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. LaFredo.
Yeah, I, first of all, want to thank you for the excellent report. Apologize to my colleagues. My wife is teaching a college class, so I don't have the other computer in front of me, so I don't have the report in front of me. But I did want to make a comment. I reviewed it this morning, and I was especially delighted to see the 10-year path that you put at several locations in the report, where we could break it down over 10 years so we could see the progress and where we were going. And I will, since I'm back in the last century, I'm going to print it out and put it in a booklet and keep it in my desk. But anyway, I wanted to thank you very much for the report.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Madam Mayor, I believe staff does need a motion of acceptance.
Yes, I'm aware. I just, I wanted to also say to Mr. Lorena, thank you so much for your report. I took great care to read it, and I was very pleased with the outcomes for which you've mentioned in your presentation. So, and thank you, Holly and Tom, for, you know, doing what you do and being cooperative and helping us all understand where we are financially, what our wherewithal is. We appreciate it. Thank you. And with that, any other questions or comments? Okay. Madam Clerk, do you need a roll call, or how do you want to take the vote?
I'll go for a roll call.
I'll move to accept.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk? Councilman Melz?
He's on mute.
Yes.
Councilman LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilman Brady?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Birch?
Yes.
Mayor Wagler?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we're back to item 6A, ordinance of the Village Council of Miami Shores Village, Florida. Amending the Miami Shores Village Code, Chapter 2, by revising Village Code, Section 2-90, Subsections A, B, C, providing for the Miami Foundation as a designating entity for two seats on the Charter School Authority Board of Directors, by revising Village Code, Section 2-95, providing for biannual reports to the Village Council and providing for an effective date. Item is sponsored by Vice Mayor Alice Birch.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Birch?
Yes, I really appreciate staff bringing this matter forward again, and thank you to Ms. McIntosh for helping out with the ordinance changes. They are minor, but they're meaningful. These two changes are meaningful because when you have a transition, as the school is having right now, to new leadership, you need to be very clear to everyone involved who the naming entities are. There are junctures in school life when that becomes very important. And the second one that I feel is important is to refine the ordinance 15 years later to point out that over the years, it has been the most common to have two different presentations or appearances before council rather than four. So I hope my colleagues see these changes as reasonable, and I would appreciate your support on this item.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Birch. Any questions or comments for Vice Mayor Birch? Okay. Then we shall take a vote. Madam Clerk? Do I have a motion? Excuse me, do I have a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve the ordinance on first.
Yeah. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Very good. All in favor?
Madam Mayor, if I could?
Aye.
Vote.
Yep.
Councilman Brady?
Yes.
Councilman LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilman Melz? Vice Mayor Birch?
Yes.
Mayor Wagler?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is announcements. I just wanted to remind the residents that next Tuesday, July 14th, at 6:00 PM, the Virtual Village Council Budget Workshop will be held. The agenda will be published tomorrow along with the proposed budget, and ecomments will also be available to the public if you'd like to share any public comments with the council. And then I also wanted to remind residents that the second Village Council meeting will be held on July 21st at 6:30 PM via virtual means as well. Village Council comments.
Mr. Brady, any comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of brief ones. The first thing I did want to do, and I wanted to thank the village staff, in particular the staff at the Recreation Center, the Community Center, for putting together a very solid summer program and adhering to all the best CDC guidelines. It's been running, I think, very smoothly. I've been very impressed with the organization at Drop Off and Pickup, and the kids are extremely grateful to be out of the house with me. So I just wanted to thank them all very much for a really great job over there. The second thing I want to say, just leading up, just to continue to reiterate, that to please do follow the guidance that our county is giving in regards to wearing a mask and being safe and taking precautions in case they get comments from residents that are not exactly sure why they need to wear a mask if they're not at risk. And it's just to reiterate to people, it's to protect other people, you know, not yourself. And you may be carrying it and just not aware of it, and just that little bit of precaution, even though it may be a little uncomfortable at times, is, really goes a long way to saving lives and reducing the duration of this outbreak that we're having. I also just wanted to let the people that commented on FAA proposed changes know that, you know, we have been following that, and if you look a little bit more closely at it, I know we may have, you know, differences of opinions depending on where you live, but it really looks to narrow the traffic, the paths of the planes coming in and out of the airport, and moves them, if there are some graphs included there, I shared with the, I shared with the clerk, and that people can find online that can show what the radar tracks look like today and what the proposed path looks like, and it actually moves a dramatic amount of traffic away from Miami Shores Village, puts more of it out over the bay. So I just would recommend people take a look at that. That would be all. I thank you all for a great meeting today, and thank you to our, you know, staff as usual, helping us get a really solid report from our financial auditors.
Thank you. Mr. LaFredo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank again the auditors. I just really felt a lot better about our situation after going through that. The other thing I wanted just to mention, I know we didn't take item 7A tonight, but I had reviewed the resumes or the applications, and I'm much relieved, a really good group of applicants, very good group of applicants. I feel much relieved that when we get them on board, we're going to do very well. And with that, I wish everybody a good hot July. Thank you.
Councilman Melz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, but I do not have any comments tonight.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Birch?
Yes, I have comments. First of all, I would like to address those people who commented about FAA. I'd like to thank Councilman Brady for providing us with the tracks. And I would like to point out a couple of interesting things. I was a member of the Noise Abatement Advisory Board. I was named by Mayor Holly a number of years ago. And when I was elected, we passed that position on to Bob Davis, the brother of former Mayor Al Davis. And it is now coming to light how important having a representative is. The county has a structure. Noise abatement is comprised of those communities like ours who are affected by flights that enter and exit Miami International as well as Opa-locka. And so becoming a member of this committee is really important to your village, but it's a great but it's a great learning experience for you. If you are willing to spend the time, and some of the meetings, yes, are in Miami Springs, and it was a challenging commute. Perhaps those will change in the future to virtual meetings. We don't know. But if you think that you could give the time, please contact the manager or Mayor Wagler. It is the mayor that names this person. And if you were to do this, then a year or so ago, we would have heard from you as our representative when FAA first began to consider next-gen and the Metroplex model. But I am going to give you a few examples of what awaits you if you're a member of the committee. When you walk in, you know we have 36 municipalities. You have a chart of all the noise complaints that have happened over the last year by month. And that comes into a very active phone line at Miami International. And there's an email address also called noise@MiamiAirport.com. And so you will submit those complaints, and that data is very carefully kept. So what has resulted over the last year of the various public comment and input by FAA, by the airlines, by those individuals throughout the community who've been part of that input has been a compromise of trying to keep those aircraft over the bay as much as possible. And I do encourage our communications specialists to get the word out in the next few days, and those members of our community who would like to express their concerns from their individual standpoint. You can give your address, and you can let them know why it affects you and when, what are some of the times of day that you feel that you really need relief from this. And they will be heard and read, and there's also an environmental study being done. So not to be too long-winded, but having had that experience, I'd like to urge someone here in the village that is interested in flying, in aircraft, in environmental controls over those things, to put their name in and become our representative. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Birch. Thank you for a good meeting today, you all. I'd like to second what Councilman Brady said with regard to the Community Center. I am extremely impressed with how they are operating over there with all the precaution that they're taking, how fluid it is, how easy it is to drop off and pick up. And I just want to commend them because I know that took a lot of hard work to put all that together. So they are taking temperatures, they've got all the PPE, they're keeping the kids separate, and also they're entertaining the children. And I know, as what Councilman Brady said, the kids are excited to get out and at least have small groups to interact with. And mommy and daddy are happy about that, too. So I just wanted to commend the Community Center staff for really putting together a great program. And I want them to know that we are greatly appreciative of it. I mean, just, well, job well done. And with regard to the Sustainability and Resiliency Committee, we are trying to figure out a way via Zoom that we are able to vote on these positions. I'm very excited about the pool, and I'm anxious to get this going as I think they could be a resource with all this expertise for the village. So hopefully, we'll be able to figure out how we can get that board up and going. But thank you all for being here this evening. Are there any other comments? No? All right. Thank you, Ms. McIntosh, for joining us this evening. See you.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to thank Holly Hugdahl. You know, I know that several years in a row now, she has received this certificate of achievement. It's not easy to do that. It's, her job appears very seamless. She works very hard, so does her staff. And this time of year, I just want to commend you, Holly, for a great job. And we have so much confidence in you, and you give us so much comfort knowing your experience level in audit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. There being no further business at the village, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and have a great week. We'll see you next week. Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Take care.